Okay, go ahead.
Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for July 8th, 2025. Please rise for the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a few items to cover before we get started. Please sign in at the door if you have not already done so. There you will also find a detailed handout of the step-by-step procedure we'll follow tonight. If you wish to take one, please put any electronic devices on silent mode at this time. Also, please note that all testimony is being recorded for the record. Members that a planning commissioner appointed by the County Board of Commissioners with one member from each of the five Commissioner districts. Land Service staff is here to assist the planning commission with its duties. The task at a planning commission is to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the County Board of Commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments in accordance with state law and county ordinance. The burden of proving a request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. There is a protocol for how we will proceed tonight. For each request on the agenda, we will hear a staff report, hear testimony from the applicants, and then we will discuss and gather more information as needed. Next, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the request. I will ask each party to come to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and give their testimony. Please be as factual as possible and direct all statements and questions to me. After all testimony is complete, I will close the public hearing portion of the process. The planning commission will then review and discuss the case in terms of our finding of fact criteria as required by Minnesota statute and county ordinance. We'll have a series of votes, discuss whether conditions may be made. Then there will be a final motion to recommend approval or denial to the County Board of Commissioners. After this final vote on your request, you may leave if you wish. The County Board of Commissioners will then consider the request and our recommendation at their next regular meeting and will either grant or deny their request. So our first item on the agenda tonight is Jason Polly. So if the applicants would want to come right up to the front here, please. Jason Polly, 16702 Iris Road, Little Falls. Application to rezone a partial of land from rural residential to agriculture for the purpose of a business located in Lot 1, Block 1 of Highwood Hills, Section 27, Township 40, Range 32, Little Falls Township. So if you guys would just go into the mic and state your name for the record, please.
Jason Polly.
Tara Polly.
Okay, thank you. Amy, you ready with staff report?
Hi, Mr. Chair. Again, this is a request to rezone a parcel from rural residential to agriculture to continue the operation of an automotive repair business. The ordinance section that pertains to this is Section 508, and that requires a public hearing to change the official zoning map. Here is an aerial photograph of the property outlined in blue. And then here is a zoomed-out aerial photo of the area with the property, again, outlined in blue with the zoning layer on. Everything with that orange zoning is given a rural residential zoning district, and everything that does not have color is agriculture. Some highlights from the staff report in the application is that this is a three-acre parcel within the Highwood Hills residential subdivision, and that subdivision is zoned rural residential. The property has a dwelling and an automotive repair shop, which currently is a violation as automotive repair is not an allowable use within the rural residential zoning district. The applicant proposes to rezone to agriculture in order to pursue an after-the-fact interim use permit for the automotive repair shop. Surrounding zoning includes rural residential and agriculture, as I just showed you. And then there was one comment against the request that was received, and I will read that. And then also, there was some pictures sent, so I'll send those down your way as I read the comments. So this comment is from Jonathan Laflamme and Alicia Reif. They said, "We, Jonathan Laflamme and Alicia Reif, residents of 12121 Skyview Ridge Road, Little Falls, are writing to formally express our strongest opposition to the rezoning request submitted by Mr. Jason Polly regarding Lot 1, Block 1 of Highwood Hills, Section 27, Township 40, Range 32, in Little Falls Township. This request proposes changing the zoning designation from rural residential to agriculture for the purpose of establishing a business operation. We are deeply concerned about the environmental, social, and financial implications this change would introduce to the surrounding neighborhood and community. Below, we outline four specific areas of objection. One, environmental and water safety concerns. The applicant's current land use practices have already demonstrated harmful environmental impact. Soils, trees, and natural vegetation have been removed to create what appears to be a makeshift mud derby or off-road racetrack. Following rainfall, stormwater runoff from this area flows southward along the natural grade, pooling and mixing of fluids leached from more than 30 abandoned vehicles that have reportedly sat on the property for over five years. These activities pose a serious risk to the groundwater quality, which may jeopardize the safety of local drinking water. Additionally, we have observed Mr. Polly on multiple occasions attempting to redirect standing water from this pit into public roadways and adjacent private property, a practice that is both hazardous and inconsiderate. Two, excessive noise and light pollution. We also object to the considerable levels of noise and light pollution emanating from the Polly property. The operation and racing of multiple modified vehicles, including ATVs, trucks, and so-called monster trucks frequently occur late into the evening and early morning hours. These disturbances degrade the peace, livability, and residential character of our neighborhood. We respectfully request that, should any continued use of the land be permitted, Morrison County require the installation of an industrial-grade sound barrier or fence comparable to those used in urban freeway zones to mitigate both visual and acoustic disturbances. Three, negative impact on surrounding property values. There has been a noticeable decline in neighborhood aesthetics due to the growing presence of junked vehicles, disassembled parts, and unregulated motor activities. This visual blight and consistent disruption directly undermine the property values of neighboring homes and deter future investment in the area. Rezoning the parcel from commercial slash agricultural purposes, or for commercial and agricultural purposes, would institutionalize this degradation and further accelerate devaluation for many responsible landowners nearby. Four, current noncompliance with zoning regulations. According to Morrison County zoning records, the property in question is presently designated as rural residential. Therefore, the current use of the property for commercial, automotive storage, off-road racing, and what effectively constitutes an unlicensed junkyard is not permitted under existing law. Granting a rezoning request would only reward prolonged noncompliance, but also set a dangerous precedent that property owners may disregard regulations until retroactive approval is sought. Conclusion and request. We respectfully urge Morrison County Land Services to deny the rezoning request submitted by Mr. Polly. Further, we ask that the county investigate current use violations and require the installation of a high-grade sound dampening fence to protect the integrity of the neighborhood and surrounding environment. And then thank you for your attention to this matter. So that was the comment that was received, Mr. Chair. Again, the purpose of the Rural Residential Zoning District is to promote and protect areas which have low density, generally residential development, and are essentially rural in character. It is intended to allow traditional rural activities such as agriculture, forestry, home businesses, and occupations in manners that do not degrade the rural character of the area. The purpose of the Agriculture Zoning District is to promote and protect areas which have high-quality agricultural lands and are essentially rural in nature. Within this district, agriculture activities are given precedence over other land uses. And then, Mr. Chair, as you know, there are no criteria questions that you need to go through for a rezone, but here are some discussion suggestions should you need them. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Would either the Paulies have any comments to any of that, or anything to add to the staff report?
What do we do with the water runoff that comes from the hill down to my place with no, there's no culverts, nothing in my yard to get rid of the water? I'm kind of out of control in that situation. Everything runs downhill from up there.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions for either staff or the applicants?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
How long have you been running the business?
Well, I've been doing cars, working on cars since I was 19, back in, what did we move there, 91?
Putzing.
Yeah.
I'd say your business was...
I got my LLC in 2010.
So for 15 years at that property?
Yeah. Okay.
On and off. When he, he tries to have a regular job, you've gone to have a regular job, but with medical issues, it's not always possible, so we fall back on staying mechanics at home. And that's why you went back and got the LLC. And we thought we were in compliance when we talked to the county, but apparently it wasn't the full what we were supposed to do. We, that's our bad.
Well, the county assessor, he came and, and I, he stated himself that it was a rezoned to commercial use property, and it used to say it on Morrison County Beacon. To, to, I know it's not the same, but I'm just saying, this is what he told me, that he had to rezone the two acres of it for commercial use. And I said, okay, fine, whatever, they increased my taxes, and I never heard a thing from them for years after that. I thought that's all I needed to do. He, I mean, that's what he told me he had to do to get it zoned commercial, so I could continue my operations, is what I was understanding, and nobody ever talked to me again about it.
And then we had a complaint, and it was right around this water area, I would say five, six years ago, when it was a lot of flooding.
Oh, yeah. Every year, it's a complaint.
We were trying to do something so we could use the land, because it was just, it was flooded. So we were trying to move the water places, and it's just, so I get that.
How do you move water without, all the way of draining?
No, I'm just wondering how long the business was, has been in place. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
And Amy?
I certainly can clarify what Mr. Polly was talking about with the, and I think I put it in the staff report a little bit, but tax classification for tax purposes is done by the county assessor's office. It's completely separate and ignores the zoning district. So the zoning district for zoning purposes, which outlines the various uses that can occur, has always been rural residential. However, when the assessor goes out there and looks at, okay, what's going on on the property, they're going to classify the property however it's being used, regardless of the zoning district. So this is split class, because they're using it two different ways. They have their homesteaded dwelling there, so it's a split class of homestead residential and commercial because the automotive repair shop is there. So, so that's what, so when the assessor said, hey, I've got to, I've got to switch you, I've got to switch your, he's, he did not rezone them. He changed the tax use classification because of what was going on on the property.
So why did it say two acres of commercial property? And then, well, I didn't, maybe I didn't catch it, but, and then all of a sudden, they took that away. And when you go online and look at it years ago, it used to say after he, after the county assessor changed the taxes to commercial, it used to say one acre residential, two acres commercial.
I think it still does.
Well, it's worded different now. It doesn't say it like it was before, but then...
It might because some, the tax laws change, and so sometimes that verbiage might change a little bit, but it's still split classed.
And that's when all the complaints started, after that changed again, they're like, well, he's running, because it says residential. So if anybody just goes on and looks, I would assume it's residential too by looking at it. And that's where all the complaints started, like, you're not zoned for it, and that's, like, that's what I was unaware of.
So anyway, just to explain that.
Thank you, Amy.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
A few questions. Jason, how do you respond about the neighbors with the noise? And, you know, I looked at Beacon, and I could see where, you could see a lot of vehicles. Our vehicle's been running around here in late hours and doing this here. What is your response to it? Because if you are, it's pretty disrespectful from your neighbors, because you could see there's a fair amount of population around there.
I haven't really been running anything around for quite a while.
I feel like in the last eight years, I would say that has changed dramatically. But we had some, we had an unruly 16, 17-year-old, so that probably played into it.
So how long was that?
About five, six years ago. I mean, he's moved out since and comes back and forth, but we try to maintain, but his work...
I haven't had my mud truck or nothing run in two years.
But he has a wood mover, and I, I don't feel like that's allowed, unruly, but...
So then, then I also, when I was looking at Beacon, and maybe the lines of Beacon are slightly off, but it looks like you have numerous vehicles on your neighbor's property to the north, or is that, is that your property line like that?
I don't know, them property lines have changed so many times since I've been there, and that's old.
To the north, so behind the shop?
Behind the shop? I don't have any vehicles behind there.
Well, anyhow, when I was looking, it looks like it, but anyhow, it looks like you have quite a few vehicles around there and kind of a, it's a good thing you got some trees for an eye, but...
Well, a lot of that's gone.
Okay.
FedEx truck's gone, the other one right behind the shop, I'm getting rid of that. A lot of them vehicles on that picture are not even there anymore.
Okay, well, that's a good thing here, but yeah.
I just hauled out a bunch, I mean, last year I hauled out six, six loads of junk cars and stuff out of there already. I just did three, three loads this year.
Okay, good, because...
Most of that stuff's gone.
We have seen a few of these that are basically rural junkyards, and, and you can't blame the residents for having something to say about that, so, okay. I have nothing else at this time there, thank you.
Thank you, Marv.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, George.
So, Mr. Polly, so if we were to look at, at moving this, moving this forward to changing it to ag, I guess what, what are you going to do to be, to be a good neighbor? I guess that's my question on this, is what are you going to do to be a good neighbor? Because it sounds to me like, from the people that are living there, that, that you're not a good neighbor. So what are you going to do to change that?
What classifies as not a good neighbor? I guess, I'm not aware of that, because I, I got a few friends up the hill there, and I do a bunch of work vehicles up on the hills, so it sounds like there's one guy complaining, not, not the whole neighborhood.
Well, if we move forward, this, this is me, I'm not Jason's brain. I was reading up on the unconditional use permit, and it said we would have conditions. So then I suppose it would be how many extra vehicles could be there? That, I mean, between my boys and him, they do have vehicles that they putts on, or they take parts out, and then maybe a regular basis of cleanup and timing. We talked about that, I think, at the board meeting, the hours of operation.
Yeah, because I guess, you know, I mean, just look at, I mean, you know, I know the property pretty well, and you know, and you got, everything's in disarray around there, you know, and if we zone it, if we rezone it to ag, then, you know, I mean, you know, we're, we're allowing the same problem to go on until you get the IUP, and then there's going to be conditions, but then somebody's got to make sure that, that you're going, you're, you're adhering to those conditions. So I guess that, that's the problem that I have with this, you know, if we change it, then, then there's conditions got to be met, and that means more work for somebody that's going to have to make sure that stuff is happening.
And I don't know how to solve the water issue that they are referring to, and I mean, that's our, our problem too. I feel like we brought that up at the township, what, five, six years ago, I'm guessing?
Just hauled in 30 loads of river rock and gravel in there, just to fill in some of that stuff, and you can't even tell it was there. I mean, they have no way to get rid of water out of there, because they say there's a culvert somewhere in my property, but I've, I've never seen it.
Yeah, Amy?
It is not illegal to have mud on your property. It is not illegal to have unwanted water on your property. So we are not going to fix all of those things that are going on your property, and the fact that you have a muddy yard is not for debate tonight. So I, I would like to redirect, this is for a rezone from rural residential to agriculture. If that is granted, then they will come for the interim use permit, and then we will get into the weeds about what they're doing, what they're not doing, how they're doing it, why they're doing it, who they're doing it to, and all of those things. So I just want to make sure that we stay on task with, is this an appropriate area for a change in zoning district from rural residential to agriculture? You answer the question on whether it's an appropriate area for an automotive repair if they apply for an IUP.
Yep. George, you have more?
That's all I had.
Yep. Brent, do you have anything?
I'm just going to wait for a public comment.
Okay. So I guess that's where I was kind of going, is what Amy said, is I think we're, it's good to know what the use is or what the use wants to be. I mean, that's something, we got to know that. But I think what we got to look at more tonight is if, if this should get changed to ag or stay rural residential. It's been rural residential for a long time. It, it does fit with ag around there. Couple of years ago, it probably wouldn't even be an option, because we had to have five acres, and now we're down to an acre. So you meet that criteria. So I guess the biggest thing is tonight is, is looking at if it fits to, to change it to ag. Yes, we want to know what the use is, but we don't want to get too far into it, because let's say this would get rezoned to ag, that isn't a guarantee that you would get a conditional use permit or interim use permit or whatever. So that's a whole different subject, I think, but it is important to know what the land is getting used for.
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Amy?
One other thing, and that's spot on, and because this is just one use that would be opened up, but what you want to be doing is looking at all of the uses that are allowed in the ag zoning district and whether it's an appropriate place. And so, yes, the purpose of the rezone is important, but the, the fine details, and then the other thing too, is when it comes to some of the other complaints, those aren't anything we handle with zoning anyway. If it's a disturbing the peace, that needs to be a call to the Sheriff's Department. If it is, you know, if it is other activities like that, there are already laws in place that will take care of that. So I just want to make sure that the expectations are not that we are going to completely change the way you live your life on your property, because we don't have that sort of reach.
Yep. No, and I, and I, the reason I was saying them things, I just want the people that did the public comment, probably some people here tonight, just understand that we're not ignoring you. Some of the complaints that we heard or whatever, that, that would be more towards if it moves forward. So just, just so you guys are aware of that. But other than that, I think the biggest thing is, we got to look at, there were some of the things here is, has there been a change in the development policy of the county? Has there been rapid population growth or, or business change in area? Was there a mistake made when the original zoning was made? Does the rezone work in the comprehensive plan? Just some of them things is what we're looking at. I'm sure when that was zoned rural residential, it was just all rural residential, because it fit in with the Highwood Hills thing, you know. So it's just, we don't cut little corners, it's kind of plotchy, so. I guess at this time, we'll open up the public comment, and then we'll circle back around. So if there's anybody here that would speak to the public comment, please kind of give us reasons why or why not it should be ag or rural residential. So if you'd go to the podium in the corner, state your name for the record, and we'll hear what you got to say.
My name's Bob Jaffreys. I'm a resident of Skyview Ridge Road. I've lived there 30 years. Mr. Polly probably doesn't know me from Adam, but I'm supporting his desires here. He's been a mechanic working with his hands, as far as I've known, all the 30 years I've been there. He entertains himself with his hands. He builds things for entertainment purposes also. And you can see that in the past, the noisy mud trucks, the other activities. I didn't realize your kids were involved in that, and I would say I've noticed it's gotten quieter, so that's very likely. It's also noisy in the neighborhood due to a number of loud trucks that drive around from other neighbors who like loud noise. Not unusual for young adult males to think that a noisy pickup is a sign of something good. I don't know. I was there once, that was long ago. The water issue, you pretty well addressed that. It's not his fault that his lot fills up with water in the springtime, and the worse the snowfall is, the deeper the frost is, the worse it gets for him. Yes, I did see him futilely try to pump water over the hill, over Skyview Ridge Road one year. Hose didn't even make it to the middle of the road, so everything he pumped out went right back in again. I almost volunteered him some extra hose I had, but I figured, ah, it's just going to irritate some other people that live near me, so I did not do that. As to the number of vehicles there that show in that picture, it's not like that today, I'll stand to say that, and it sounds like some of you folks have looked the site over. The inventory of vehicles over 30 years has changed. It's not like it's the same 55 Ford pickup trucks sitting there for 30 years. Okay, he's, he's worked on stuff, he's taken parts out of it, he gave up on stuff, he got rid of it. That's my interpretation of what I see there. In short, I see no reason to deny him this application. The other interesting thing, one of your points here, was there a mistake made in the original zoning of the property? I was always puzzled at why that lot was considered part of the Highwood Hills plat, because it's an older building, it obviously was there before the other plating was done, and I just assumed that it was the original homestead for a much bigger area. Assume, I know what that means, and I'll stop there on that subject. I wished I'd taken notes on the four complaints, loud noise. I've never thought the noise was really bad during the weekdays, weekends. Again, this is back to history. It might have been a little worse on the weekends, but again, I've grown up around people for 35, 40 years, I didn't see that as a big issue. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you wanted to redirect to me, I'll go back and take a camera.
I'm Gordy Meyer. I live just straight south of, no, east, east of Jason. Been his neighbor all my life. To me, we never had no problems. He's not a bad neighbor. I've had kids too. I had a son that, well, the noise is loud sometimes, but the road that goes past John Tice gets pretty loud too, real loud, lots of times. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Chair, Charles Perrins with the supervisor of Little Falls Township, 11878 Sebelon Shores Drive. One of the purposes here is we want to kind of outline what we think is a board consensus towards this application request for a rezone from rural residential to ag for Mr. Polly and Tara. It's kind of the consensus of Little Falls Township Board that this is, an application has a number of issues that need to be resolved. The complaints and environment of the property has been going on for a great number of years and is now at a kind of a culminating point. And I've been there when I worked for the county for various reasons, and, you know, needs to be resolved, I guess is really the issue. There's questions about documentation on, you know, what Mr. Polly believes to be accurate versus what the county might believe to be accurate, and I think that can get resolved here tonight. The complaints by the landowners are legitimate and need to be addressed, primarily because it's, it's, it's maybe a visual aesthetic thing for some people, but if they feel their property values are being affected, then it's real to them, and I think there's a legitimate concern that there's something about property values that are of concern. I also believe, or the township in general, that Mr. Polly needs to be brought in compliance under the conditions that are not necessarily completely exclusive to his piece of property. under the conditions that are not necessarily completely exclusive to his piece of property. Um, in the township, if we have a lot of exclusions and makes it difficult to, um, justify one way or the other and, and one direction, we, we might either oppose or, or support, you know, a particular piece of property. We've had these very much, very, very little bit here in the past with some other pieces of property, and, and we just want it to be consistent. Um, he's also indicated that he had some exceptions by Morrison County. I think that's a confusion maybe between the tax, uh, tax ba- the taxed, uh, code and, um, what might need to actually be, you know, what, again, here, he's here for a rezone, but it needs to be in the public record exactly what it is that he has to comply with and how that works for him. So there's a number of, um, issues here that we consider. We, we definitely want the, the property brought into compliance with the land use ordinance, whatever that case might be. Uh, our board wishes, uh, to see this achieved, however, you know, it's not our intent to take away Mr. Polly's wherewithal to make a living. There could be a lot of options, but there's always economical, economic considerations to that. Um, this is a particular area that I would consider mixed zoning and, and, and from the board perspective. But I think that the, the street view for those neighbors that may or may not be in favor of this, um, it's, it's visualized as a rural residential area. I know across the road to the south and to the east is, is agriculture, but that block of area there is rural residential. And again, you know, it came up a little bit here, but rezoning to agriculture allows for a lot of different additional uses on the property. But it, it, it may not necessarily address the concerns of the residents of the area. If you leave it as rural residential, there's other stipulations in the land use ordinance that'll provide for, um, guardrails on what a piece of property may or may not be allowed to have operating there, such as a business. So if there is a rezone, there has to be conditions that provide those guardrails that may not necessarily be there on agriculture, cause agriculture can many times, you know, be in the eyes of the beholder on what might be visually, um, something, you know, garbage or whatever the case may be. I mean, I've seen a lot of people call things garbage, that, you know, one man's junk is another man's garbage, that sort of thing, but, uh, you know, there needs to be some guardrails so that everybody's fine with how he's being compliant, if that's the case. But in general, it does seem a little illogical to rezone three acres, um, to agriculture when it's, the threshold is two-point-five for rural, rural residential. And I don't know that the, the spirit of agriculture versus rural residential means three acres is a, a farm, so to speak. So, you know, is it a workaround? I don't know. That'll be up to your board to determine, but seems a little bit like a inverse, um, attempt to, to make it work and be in compliance. Not always a bad thing, but again, if you get back to specific, uh, exclusions for certain people, then it's problematic for us across time, as it probably would be for you as a board as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any other, any other public comment? Have to ask three times, so I'll ask the third and final time. Is there any public comment? If hearing no more public comments, we'll close this portion and meeting to the public. Um, Amy, you hear anything in there that we need to address or answer? I don't think so.
Mr. Chair, I don't think so. Um, just a reminder that you cannot condition a rezone, and so it's just either a recommendation to approve, uh, or deny.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Brent.
Couple of follow-up questions after listening to everybody here, and, um, questions for the Paulies. I- is there access only off Iris Road, or is there access off Skyview Ridge?
Iris Road.
I- Iris. Okay, so there is no access, there is no culvert, no road approach coming off that.
Nope.
Um, very little buffer though, as you drive up that road. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, it's right on my property line, the whole road.
Right. I mean, they can, driving up that road, you can kinda see in there as well, right? Okay. But you don't access it that way?
No.
Um, next question back to Amy. Amy, you, uh, there was comment that said that this was in existence before the development there?
I think the homestead was.
The homestead was there.
Correct.
Um, do we know what the zoning was then?
I, that, I do not know what the zoning was then. Um, when it was platted, um, I don't know that, I have a lot of insight as to why that piece got pulled into it. Usually it's one owner, and then they're dividing all of it and decided to include that, uh, in there. But I don't have a lot of insight as, as to why, but yes, there was an existing home there.
Okay.
After it broke up, I mean, I remember some of the names that were there, the gangsteds. And I think prior to that, it was the Hints, cause I feel like, um, a Hints came to me, like, oh, I think you have my house. Cause he was a parent of one of this, one of my students, but remember they had, um, pigs and stuff, so.
Yeah, they had a pig farm there before.
Um, prior, just my knowledge of the background of it.
Generally with plating, it's gonna be, you know, someone owns a tract of land, and they're gonna divide it up. And so it could've, you know, been part of a much larger.
Sure.
Piece, yes.
And, um, this is maybe another question for Amy, but should this not, uh, proceed forward for the requested change, um, the hands, the hands of the county would essentially be, um, bound to only report this for criminal prosecution? I mean, at, at that point, absent a change.
Correct. So it would continue to be a violation if the, if the rezone is not granted, and, and after the fact interim use permit is not granted, then it continues to be an ongoing violation. If we don't get compliance with the property owner, uh, then yes, we would refer it to the county attorney for charges, and we're, this is, we've been at this for a few years. So we're, we're at that point where we would be referring it.
And, and so, back to me, I guess, no other questions, but a comment at this point would be, um, absent doing nothing, uh, a- and not changing this, the avenue forward is, is criminal prosecution. Um, and that, and that was spelled out in the letter, uh, reg- that started this all. Um, and you were told to bring it into compliance and, and to meet with the county. You've done that, you brought that forward. Uh, should we re, uh, you know, recommend that this be rezoned, then you can apply for a conditional use permit. Then there's likely to be many conditions put on that you're going to have to follow and could be enforced then by the zoning, uh, office and staff. And, um, you can continue to, to operate your business, although it's going to be likely restricted based upon comments and concerns, uh, that are addressed here tonight and at future meetings. Um, and so that's really where we're at, uh, for the folks in the audience here, is we're not trying to, you know, limit somebody and put them out of business and make criminals out of them. We're trying to bring things into compliance, move forward, uh, have some, have some tools to work with, uh, in the future, rather than just having a sole option of refer- referring it for criminal prosecution. So that's my comment.
Anybody else have anything else?
Okay, my comment is when we look at this from a rezoning standpoint, if we were gonna move this particular, um, three acres, and let's say you'd move it to the northwest, up in the middle there, I probably wouldn't be looking at this, okay? But now it's in the corner, we've, uh, designated and rezoned other portions that are very similar to this situation for a lot less. I don't feel it's fair to, um, restrict somebody that's making a living and done it for fifteen years. I'll have questions on that if it mo- if it moves forward um, to the next meeting. Um, this is how a business is going for that long. But, um, but anyways, when I look at it, it kinda fits in what consistency and what we've done in the past. Um, I don't think it's spot zoning, um, just some of them things. And again, um, if this were to get done, it would get in compliance, and, and also there could be some other uses on this property other than just what you're doing. But then they would also involve some other permitting if you change, let's say you change five years down the road, and you wanna build cabinets or whatever. Um, but then there'd be a different permit for that or whatever. Um, so that's kinda my thinking on this and my comments on it. Um, with that, if anybody else has anything else to say, um, let's speak our mind, otherwise we're gonna go to the vote.
Mr. Chair, I agree with both, with Clint's at, at state here and Brent, because, uh, we've done it numerous times. It doesn't fit in agriculture, but with agriculture, the way it, uh, was explained to me, it gives us the tools to go ahead and put the conditions, and you, there, you're not allowed any of this in rural residential. But you can in ag, so that's why classifying, if you didn't get that explained. But, uh, and then there, like Brent said, there's probably gonna be a lot of conditions if it gets to that, uh, level and, uh, to pacify the neighbors and the neighborhood and everything else. And we're, we're here to work with you as you're trying to work with Land Services and the township, I hope. So, thank you.
Any more comments or questions? You guys ready to vote? Okay, on this vote, it's just, um, yes, if, uh, you wanna recommend approval to the commissioners, and no, if you wanna recommend denial. Okay? So Marvin?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint, is yes. So is there a motion to recommend approval?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to recommend this to approval, uh, approval for the county board.
I will second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to recommend approval to the county board of commissioners. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're gonna recommend to the county board of commissioners that they approve this for a rezone. Um, their meeting will be July fifteenth. Um, so if you got any questions between then and now, contact, uh, staff at Land Services, and, uh, they can answer any of them questions for you, okay? And then after that, it'll determine if, uh, we're gonna move forward or what's gonna happen, okay? All right, thank you. You guys are free to go.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any new business or old business?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do not have any.
Okay, I don't have any either. Um, somebody wanna re- make a motion to approve the minutes from June tenth?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve last meeting's minutes.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from June tenth, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, minutes are approved. So take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Brent, seconded by George to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Meeting adjourned at, uh, six forty-six.